Tonight is Monday, February 15th. It's about 7:15. Council will be meeting tonight in regular session. However, we're going to start 15 minutes early with a Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. I'm going to turn it over to Member Bain.
Okay. Good evening. We had a meeting on Thursday, and there are a number of small details to work through. I did send you an email, and that email went over these things. But I thought it would be good to talk about them a wee bit in advance. And so, once again, we're amending the appropriation ordinance, which goes on until the end of the year. Typical. And because we just make our best guess on what's going to happen. And so, the first thing we have to do, and this is no shock to anybody who pays property taxes, the property taxes have gone up, at least mine did. And not surprisingly, I thought, I wonder how much the cities will go up? And here we have it. $25,000 additional charge to the general fund. And that's the first thing on the agenda. There's also another tax item down below. That's what happens when you do improvements. I'm teasing. The taxes go up. It doesn't really always happen that way, but there it is. So, we have those two items, additional money needed in the tax lines.
Not everybody has a copy.
Not everybody has a copy?
So, do you want to talk about, just mention that parking garage?
Okay.
I do.
Oh, the people out in the, okay. $1,800 to the parking garage fund, 730 transaction class 300 to pay the property tax. And we pay taxes on that building because it is a proprietary building. We have to do it. It's non-tax exempt. And they used to say, and I'm not sure it's true anymore, that the amount we pay out is about equal to what we get in. I'm not sure it's true, but somebody will have to ask.
You mean in terms of revenue?
In terms of property taxes, we pay on our proprietary billing versus our cut on the tax bill. It was always a, I never heard you say it, Mayor. It was a previous mayor. Okay. And I may just be spreading smack. So, here's the next thing on the agenda. We have $1,500 needed in this CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund. And we pay the administrator of our revolving loan fund money in, money out. And so, we needed money from the balance to go up into the line so that activity can be compensated for. So, we're talking about $1,500 into the CDBG revolving loan fund. And then, the next item on 2010 is that we have to put approximately $15,000 that was not encumbered back into the Athens Enhancement Fund. These funds were donated by the Chamber of Commerce and the Athens Uptown Business Association to purchase Court Street benches, trees, tree fencing, and grates. And those are all going to be purchased this year. There were some expenditures last year, but this one will continue the process of uptown beautification. And so, it's simply a matter of restoring this. We're going to also ask for suspension because, although as I count, I'm not sure we'll have enough to do it, but in order to do this. And the last item is one that was requested by the Service Safety Director. Occasionally, we make mistakes in utility billing, overcharge. And in order to give back money or to return money, we have to have money in the line. And you can see that we are putting $1,000 into sewer administration fund, 750, 636 transaction class 7, 600, in order to do the refunds. And so, that's a typical thing. I won't say housekeeping, but that's typical. The next thing is 21, yep.
Yeah, actually, that was my mistake. I put money in different refund lines, and that one and another one I slipped through. The cases where you have lots of transaction class pieces to put in.
Okay. So, but it's no biggie, right? Because we haven't had, we haven't needed it yet, but we will put that money in there.
Not yet, but we will probably. We'll have refunds sooner or later.
Sooner or later. Okay. The other item is 2110. Actually, 2210 is also on here, and we might as well talk about that as well. In this one, in 2110, we say the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $15,000 from the general fund, 100.120 Other Administration, for payment of a prior year bill to the Ohio Municipal Joint Self-Insurance Pool. And this is our liability insurance. And so, somehow, in an effort to get the bill off their desk, they sent it to us at the very last minute. It was impossible to get it paid. So, we're going to pay it this year. And that is it on that. Sherry, could we be doing a reading on all of these? And on 2210, when Chris Nysley and I met with, met with the Streets Director and the Service Safety Director, he requested, given the number of things that are on his agenda this year, that we move this out quickly. And what this is, is the following. In order to build the road, which is called Circle Drive, but isn't fully developed and has not really been accepted by the city, we needed money. And we passed a number of legislative items to secure that money from grants, because it's been our longstanding policy for about a year, that if we have roads that are new or need major improvements, the beneficiaries pay. And that's pretty self-evident in subdivisions. But in the whole circle example, that's why I said about a year. It's actually two years now, close to it. We insisted that they or the people benefiting would pay for the new road, the whole circle access road. And we learned a few things from that. I guess that we could say the Street Director, also known as the City Engineer, learned even more. And so, he asked that we do what's outlined in 2210, that we request the promised advanced payment from University Healthcare and Retirement Community, and that we put that $65,000 into the Street Fund, so that he may do design engineering of Circle Drive, project number 241. Probably, the construction will be later, maybe even a year down the road. But what that will do is allow him to work that activity into the myriad other things that are on his agenda, and will allow him to get a firm number, so we can move into the process of getting assessments, because it's our intention. As you all remember from our various meetings on this, that we're going to assess the balance from left, that is left after the A R C pays the cost to the property owners, the beneficiaries. And that's basically 2210. Okay? Any questions? Okay. So, what we're doing is accepting that money in advance. And Kent isn't here to talk about a bench, but that's basically what we did in our meetings on Wednesday and Thursday. The 2210 is not in a hurry at all. It's not an emergency. So, we will, of course, be reading that second reading in two weeks. But the other two will require, because the nature of them, paying overdue bills and getting the bench money out. We're going to ask for suspension, should we have enough people to do that.
Mayor Wile?
And as you said, Nancy, the 2210 is so we can get the design, so we can get a number on that. If you remember, the assessment process is usually pretty long, drawn out. The faster we get that done, again, the faster we can start, you know, the assessment process, which requires design, and of course, everything to the assessment board, and the amount and how you do it. So, as done with Carpenter Street, which took us four or five readings and four or five different resolutions and ordinances. So, it's good that we're getting it out.
So, if we're lucky, we might have it done by the end of the summer, right? And we'll be able to tell the people what we want in terms of assessment. They'll be able to press their case, should they choose to do it. With an assessment board, we'll have to promote, or I mean, appoint. I don't know. I can't remember who appoints it. Does the mayor do it, or do we? Oh, we do. Council does. Okay. We had a good one last time. Maybe we can ask them again. Okay. So, that's where we are. And I did urge Bill to cancel the meeting tonight, but then it stopped snowing. And so, I'll stop on that note. He's stuck in traffic, though, north of Columbus.
Any other comments about the Finance and Personnel Committee? We have three minutes, I believe. Member Alahu is going to talk quickly about some environmental issues, I believe.
Yes, and it's
It's under miscellaneous, I guess.
It's somewhat finance-related, absolutely. This is regarding the Community Center Solar Project. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone got an update, and we have had some recent developments. This project, the company Solar Vision out of Columbus, was awarded a large grant to install a pretty significant solar array at the community center in a setup in which the city would purchase the electricity over a long number of years. And the company Solar Vision would own, operate, and maintain the solar array itself. There was a question on price of the electricity, and Solar Vision studied about two years' worth of bills from the community center. And they said they were unable to predict if their current pricing system would be guaranteed to save the city money on our electricity. So, just Friday, I got word from them that they will put that in the contract, that in no event would we be paying more for electricity compared to a situation of a system we're not in place. So, they guarantee that our costs would not go up for the electricity. And that's pretty important to have in there. The state wants to move the stimulus money pretty quickly. Council authorized the mayor to enter into a contract for this sometime late last year. I don't remember exactly when. I think it was perhaps in November. So, he has the legal authority, but to make sure that everyone was on the same page, I wanted to bring that information back. And I will also be making copies of the draft agreements available to council tonight. And they will have to be passed through the Law Director's office shortly as well.
Took your words right out of my mouth, Alahu. I was just going to ask that, make sure that I get to see the final drafts of those before we sign them. I know I was speaking to the mayor this morning about this same issue. You know, of course, I was in the room when they'd made the present, you know, the 15% savings. And the way that was presented to us was as that was something that was going to happen, that that was a guarantee. And so, we just want to make sure that the contract language reflects that intent. So, thank you for your leadership on that issue, by the way.
Any quick questions?
One of the things I asked Alahu to talk about, and, or really, maybe I asked the mayor, ask somebody. It seemed to me that the paper announced that we were awarded about half of what the initial grant request is for. Isn't that correct?
I think there was some confusion or miscommunication there.
I could have misread it.
As far as I'm aware, they were awarded what they asked. And it paid for around $630,000 out of a total of about 1.5 million. The city, as it being owned and financed by Solar Vision, the city would not have to come up with any of the remaining funds.
It's a good thing.
Solar Vision finances anything that's not grant-funded.
So, we got exactly what we asked for, is that, so?
I believe so.
That's what I have thought, too. Again, it's all on their heads to make up the money. We do not do the contracting. We're just leasing the, the agreement is for them to use our parking lot, put up car ports, so to speak. And the requirement is that we buy the electricity. But the actual contracting with the phototech installer, the car ports, that's all they're doing.
So, in other words, will we be having money come into the city and go out to the developer, or will it go directly to the developer?
When you say money, you mean?
Mean the $630,000.
To go directly to them.
Okay. So, we don't need to do any legislation?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the city did not, was not an actual applicant in that process.
Okay.
Anything else, Mayor, about this particular issue? We're going to move right into our regular session of Athens City Council. It's almost 7:30. And first of all, we're going to, I'm Councilmember Sands. I'm serving as President Prochem. President Bias is not able to be here tonight, so I'll be moderating the show, but I'll also be voting on issues that come before council. And we do have a quorum tonight with six members present, which means that there are some issues that we would like to suspend the rules on. We have enough members to do that. Doesn't mean that everybody's going to vote that way, but it's possible. First of all, we'd like to deal with two sets of minutes from regular sessions.
To accept?
Yes. So, I'd like to move to accept the minutes from the special session of City Council held January 25th, and also the regular session of City Council held February 1st.
Second?
Second. All those in favor of accepting those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign? Thank you. The minutes are accepted. Communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile?
Oh, I thought you were going to do the financials, too. That's what I was waiting.
I'm sorry?
Financial reports, are you going to accept those, too?
Ah, yeah, I have them, yes.
Okay. That's why I wasn't prepared for my step.
I was going to make my maybe last, so.
Okay. I have no problem with that. Just two things. There will be a police community dialogue meeting, March 1st. Just to reiterate, 5:00 to 6:30 at Christ the King Church on Mill Street. This is where the police can get together with anybody who has issues in terms of community activities. And again, the location has been other places. Community Center this time on Mill Street. It's a little bit closer to student zones. The other thing, of course, is that we're having that public hearing on the Court Street, B3 to B2D. That's this Wednesday at noon in this room, and before the City Planning Commission. So, we'll be taking public comments at that time. And that's all I really have.
Auditor in heck?
No report.
Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make an issue, make comment on an issue, which I think is pretty timely, given the weather outside. And I know that I'm not the first person to make this admonition over the years. But as many, many people know, Mayor Wile has taken a real leadership role and made it a priority to begin enforcement this year of our city ordinances, calling on property owners to remove dangerous snow and ice from their sidewalks. And I bring this up because just today, Judge Grimm of the Athens County Municipal Court stated from the bench that basically reinforced the idea that this ordinance applies not only to property owners, but also in the case of rentals, to both landlords and to tenants. And so, this is a duty that extends to everybody that is connected with property that has sidewalks. And so, certainly, if there is snow and ice on your sidewalks, please make sure to get that removed in a timely fashion, because tickets are being issued and cases are being prosecuted. So, thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
And with that in mind, thanks for getting the opinion out and letting us know about that. And that's it. It's snowing outside. Clean your sidewalks. I should have said that before. But if we want a nice pedestrian-friendly city, that's the first thing you can do. It doesn't take more than a second to slip and fall.
Also, when people clear their parking lots and stuff, and when they've, you know, put the big pile up, they need to make sure it's not on the sidewalk.
They'll probably get tickets for that.
So, that people go up and over these little drifts of snow and turn into glaciers. And that's, I saw that in front of one of the gas stations. They just plowed it right up onto the sidewalk. And so, it's just, you need to, you know, not everybody wants to drive right now. It's the best time to think of pedestrians.
Thank you. Okay. And from the President, several communications. First of all, I would like to ask that the council approve the January financial reports that the auditor has placed in the office and emailed to us. Could I have a?
I move to accept the financial report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting financial reports for January, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The reports are approved. And also, we are in receipt, I think we mentioned this already, of a liquor permit, the transfer of a liquor permit from Mistrada's Italian Market on the south side on Schaefer Street, transferred to the Super X store on, it says Super X, is it Super X or CBS, actually? I'm sorry. Hook Super X LLC, that's why I got confused. Okay. On East State Street, the CBS store on East State Street. As far as we know, it's a carryout beer and liquor permit, from what we understand here. Anybody who has a comment, pro or con about this transfer, needs to make that comment in writing to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control by March 8th, 2010.
Mr. Sands?
Yes.
Does this have anything to do with them putting it through their drive-through?
We had some communication about that. Who spoke to you, your people?
I, we had spoken to, because it was very, when we had, when council had gotten this notice, this was probably a couple of months ago now, it had been, the way that the name had appeared on the form, it mentioned a drive-through, but it basically was, basically just appended to the address. And so, we checked with the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, to try to clear that up. And they said that, as they read that, that appeared to be just part of the address and not an application for a drive-through.
Okay. Thank you.
And last of all, I want to just mention a letter that we received, the Service Safety Director received, actually, from a citizen praising the snow clearing crew for their work on Briarwood and Bryan. Bryan is a hill at the end of Briarwood. And Mr. Molenew says that Bryan Road was plowed and salted early in the storm. Then again, when it stopped, Bryan was usable, as was Briarwood. This is really very good service, especially when I consider the budget constraints our department faces. Express our thanks to your crews. And we here also want to express our thanks to the crews who have been working diligently. The snow we had this afternoon melted off because they were out putting cinders and salt down and plowing quickly. Any other reports or communications from elected officials? Have I covered them all? Okay. Going to move to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 1410, an ordinance authorizing rehabilitation of the Bryan Lagoon, project number 254. Ordinance 1510, an ordinance authorizing the cleaning and repair of water wells. Ordinance 1610, an ordinance authorizing construction of a new salt bin, project number Ordinance 1710, an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Ordinance 1810, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year 2010 through 2011, the Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant. Also, ordinance 1910, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development, the Ohio Department of Development for a Community Development Block Grant for calendar year 2011, which is the federal fiscal year And then, we have three ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 2010, an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Coon.
Thank you, President Sands. As we just discussed in committee, this is an ordinance to amend, the appropriation ordinance 15009, appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $25,000 to the general fund to pay the property tax, as the estimates were a little short, and there are two, two new ones. And we want to have the money to pay those on time. $1,500 to the CDBG revolving, revolving fund for professional services. $14,939.74 to the Athens Enhancement Fund. As Member Bain said, those are donations from the Chamber and the Athens Uptown Business Association for Court Street benches, trees, tree fencing, and grates. $1,800 to the parking garage funds. This is to pay the property tax on the parking garage. And $1,000 to the sewer administration fund for refunds, and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. I move to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
She has a second?
She has a second.
Thank you. The reason for the suspension is so that we can get these matters taken care of and get things paid and taken care of on time.
All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 2010, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign? Okay. The rules are suspended.
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 2010, and for the reasons we just stated and discussed at committee.
Okay, thank you. All those members in favor of adoption of ordinance 2010, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed. The ordinance is, the rules are suspended. The ordinance is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, we have ordinance 2110, an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior year expense and declaring an emergency, also introduced by Member Coon.
As we also discussed in committee, and Member Bain explained to us that this bill arrived at the last minute in 2009, and there just wasn't time to pay it. This is a bill from last year that we really need to get paid. And so, I move to consider this ordinance 2010 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 2110, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. The rules are suspended. Member Coon?
I move to adopt ordinance 2110.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2110, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Ordinance 2110, then, the rules have been suspended, and it has been accepted. And we move on to ordinance 2210, an ordinance accepting advanced payment of funds from University Healthcare and Retirement Community, UHCRC, for design engineering associated with improvements to Circle Drive, and amending ordinance 07109, introduced by whom?
Councilmember.
Councilmember Nysley.
Right. And I'll speak in her absence.
Okay.
We have, in this ordinance, the vehicle for accepting payment from an outside developer who will pay the engineering, the design engineering on Circle Drive improvements, which will be hopefully funded by grant funds. And the balance, then, will be secured, the balance after the grant funds are used, will be secured by assessment process. Specifically, Andy Stone, the City Engineer, asked for this to be adopted now, so that he can work it into a schedule. And the road development may take some time. And we actually, I think that there's good evidence that we're having this, but we're trying, by the time we get to third reading, everything will be in place. So, that's what this is about, and Chris will be talking about it next time.
Okay. So, when you said adopted now, you mean in three readings?
In three readings, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless you choose to suspend on two.
We move on to a resolution for second reading, a three-reading resolution for second reading. And I introduced this, and at this time, I would like to move that we consider resolution 0210 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This is a resolution regarding the tax rates, city property tax rates within the city of Athens. And it comes to us from the county auditor's office. And they need this returned to them by March 1st, 2010. We won't have another meeting, regular session, before then. So, we need to get this done. I move that we consider resolution 0210 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign. Thank you. I move adoption of resolution 0210.
Second.
Okay. This resolution, again, coming from the county auditor's office, sets the millage rates for properties in Athens Township and properties in Kanan Township that are within the city limits. Several properties on the east end of town are actually in Kanan Township. And the rates are staying the same as last year, but the auditor does predict an increase of several thousand dollars, from $788,000 of return to $800,000 of return. So, but that's a prediction, as all So that's a prediction, as all property rates are. So at this time, I move that we accept resolution 0210.
Second.
All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say aye. And it is approved, then. And then we go to a one-reading resolution, resolution 0410, a resolution in support of a memorial bench for the Birth Circle, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, sir. I'll just briefly comment on this. We had a presentation a number of weeks ago by the director of the Birth Circle. And after hearing that presentation and considering the related aspects and concerns, I felt compelled to offer our support and then in turn to encourage the mayor to work out a written agreement pertaining to maintenance and care of the bench. Thank you.
Okay. So the resolution in section one says Athens City Council does hereby support a request by the Birth Circle for placement of a memorial bench at Sells Park. And then, member Butler mentions that he's also talked to the mayor about some agreement regarding maintenance.
Sure. And I believe, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I believe that the Birth Circle has noted that they will provide a bench of their making and will work in collaboration with the city rec. department about those specifications with placement at Sells Park.
Okay. Thank you.
That's my understanding. Thank you.
Was there other... Can you make a motion or not?
No.
Well, no. You go. I started talking before I made that motion.
Thank you. And I wasn't sure if I needed to make a motion to adopt with this being a one-reading resolution.
Yes, we do.
Okay. So a motion to adopt.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor of accepting resolution 0410, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have adopted resolution 0410. Announcements and other business. I'm going to give the mayor a moment. He has a reappointment...
Reappointment to the zoning board of appeals. I'm asking for Michelle Draboll to be reappointed. It's up for her renewal at this point.
Okay.
So I don't have a resume with her, with my, in my file, to tell you the truth, because she was appointed from the previous mayor about the same time. She's been on the board for quite some, for three years now. So she's time to reup.
Do, should we vote to accept that tonight, or...
Yes, please.
Okay. Then I move that we accept the mayor's reappointment of Michelle Draboll to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
All those in favor of this reappointment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Okay.
Thanks.
Michelle Draboll is thrilled to hear that she's reappointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm sure.
I think so.
And many thanks to her.
Absolutely. I'm, many of us have served under Board of Zoning Appeals, and it can be a very thankless, however, a very, very important job.
Important job. I can't please everybody, for sure.
And announcements and other business, this is the time to schedule committee meetings, if anybody needs committee meetings next week. Environment committee?
Yes. I'd like to schedule a committee meeting to discuss possibility of carbon monoxide detector requirements on city residential rental property.
Okay.
The planning and development committee? Debbie knows. She has my list.
You have a list?
I have a list.
Okay. So hack-a-lunch.
I saved them all up. And she, and when, she's going to do the contractor registration. That's what I was talking to her about. And I, given our last experience was something that was a contractor-oriented thing, I was asking her if she would consider having a meeting on the 7th of March.
A public, a public meeting.
A public meeting. And if anybody has any discussion about the...
We will go ahead and introduce it.
We will discuss it, and they can, and we'll put it on the website and get some feedback.
Good idea. Thank you.
Just because we all have some wounds from that one. And also utilities meeting, if we could.
Utilities?
Probably. I'll have to let Debbie know.
Oh, member Nysley would like to request a quick transportation committee.
How'd she do that?
She's tested.
Some issues regarding replacement of some gravely mowers and some other grant funds. And, member Butler?
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to give a brief check-in regarding the Hebe statue. My subcommittee has met and discussed the information that we received on the report from John Klein, who is a professional artist from Cincinnati, who came in and looked at the statue with us.
So you'll have that report for us next week?
Hopefully. I have to share that with the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, and then they in turn will make a recommendation to council and the mayor. So if that happens in a timely manner, then I should be able to report either this week or the following committee meeting.
Okay. And I would like to schedule, of course, a Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. And one issue that we do know, President Bias has invited representative from Student Senate to talk to us about beautification day, their plans for that, and a request from Student Senate to, for our financial support, as we have done in the past. So that will be part of our transport, of our finance committee meeting. Any other, any other committees that could possibly occur? No? Mayor?
For the Finance, Personnel, Student, Beautification Day, I think they were looking for projects, so come prepared for projects to suggest.
Actually, I think we received an email, and you've mentioned it before, so, and members of the audience, Student Senate and the supporters of this beautification day are looking for projects, not just one-day projects, but projects that would have a lifespan in the community. So please contact your council member or the mayor's office for any project ideas. Now we'll move on to opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on our agenda. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about now? Seeing no one approaching, we will adjourn.